I should go drink for a month maybe.
We're gonna do it for us later?
No, not for work session.
We're good.
Okay, relax.
Good evening, welcome. Uh, this is kinda a little bit more informal, but yeah, it's very informational. Uh, we'll encourage, encourage everybody tonight to just jump in with your thoughts. Uh, this has to do mostly with the facilities and the planning of town. We're gonna go about approving the facilities for our students' spare. Uh, I don't know, Mike, were you, were Adam to present something?
Yeah, we'll just have, um, or Chris to do that, but Adam, we department of Vilma, uh, will pass out some documents for us. Jump right into it, I like to jump right into it.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not sure if this has been emailed around or not.
I don't know.
I'm slow on the time.
I can get on the comments here.
Okay, I have one, I'll read this.
Okay. Okay. So what I have here is a proposed, um, twenty twenty-three project that touches, um, Southwood Elementary, both high schools and Metro North. And after kind of working through, um, various priorities, this is the list that I guess has been the highest priority, definitely some, some maintenance items that need to be done and some things that would, like I said, plan and set you up for future work. So, uh, I'm showing here total cost per building. Uh, so that's hard construction costs, all soft costs that would go along with the project. So it's total cost. And then you'll see, uh, each line item or each school has a project contingency set aside and, um, an allowance for escalation, which hopefully is slowing down, but we definitely need to account for that. Um, so that gives you your totals per building. Um, Southwood Elementary, the biggest need by far is the roof. Um, all the roof areas are out of warranty except for one, the library, um, definitely, definitely needs replaced. We've actually already reached out and have a contractor helping to go do roof cores, um, either the end of this week or next week. So we're kind of already getting that ball rolling. They'll help us out to diagnose what's there. We're hoping it's mostly just a membrane replacement, but the number does have an allowance for some wet insulation replacement. We're not anticipating even to tear it, the whole thing off. So that's mostly just membrane, uh, we hope.
The insulation, Adam, and Steve, that's, is that just a styrofoam then underneath that or what?
Well, we're gonna learn when McGuff's gonna help us do that. Yeah, there, there, there's different types that are most likely there. Um, extruder probably sirens, what we'd be putting on. Uh, but that's not, uh, necessarily gonna happen if we don't put everything off. So I'm not sure what, what system's there. I know the membrane on top is EPDM, but below that, I can't tell you all the, all the layers. We'll know more soon. So that's, that's Southwood, just roofing. And it's all areas except at the very north end of the building. If you go on the front, front door and walk straight north down the corridor, that last wing you hit, that north is the, the most recent roof and it's still on warranty. So this number excludes that part, but it's the rest of the roof, almost the whole building.
How many are warranted?
Um, you know, if you have ten, fifteen, fifteen warranted, that's what we usually go by. Yeah, thank you. Um, then at Southwood High School, we have the, the main gym floor replacement. North was done a few years back, um, and south still needs to be done. You see my note there, asbestos mastic is expected just because it, it happened that north. That was discovered during the tear off, so that needed to be abated. Um, so I had no risk to include that work in that replacement number as well. It's a glued down floor system. A new system is not a glued down. It would be a den rated, a more comfortable, uh, rated floor system. Very similar to what we did, what was done at North, I should say. So slightly thicker, you have those little thresholds as you walk in at, at the doors to get into the gym, um, but a much more playable, safer surface. The exterior EFS allowance, that's all the existing, kind of looks like stucco on the outside of your building. So that's a number to keep everything that's there that's still solid. Anything that's wet, there is some wet insulation, some things that need to be fixed, that will be replaced. And then the whole surface would be refinished. Um, so it's, it's on the courtyard, it's all around the building, there's quite a bit of it. Uh, but that number is to keep most of what's there, just patch repair and then refinish, uh, the whole system. The locker room renovation, those are the original locker rooms and the PE locker rooms that are in the aux gym. So it's all that square footage, uh, all the lockers between the two gyms, the old coaches officials locker room and the PE locker room. And that is a renovation. Down below the blue line at the bottom, you're gonna see another line item for that. I wanted to explain that because the number I have up above in the black, um, line is, um, keeping most of the walls, most of the plumbing where it is, you know, it's a, it's a renovation. So all finishes, partitions, fixtures, lights, ceilings and all that, but not blowing it up and totally reinventing the wheel. Uh, and that's just totally budgetary. That's just, just for, just for, uh, dollar savings. Down below, that number is bumped. So, and you'll see this at both high schools. So down below, that bumps, uh, the number essentially per square foot to include a more substantial renovation. So if you wanna create bigger spaces or there's showers that probably aren't really used and we actually do wanna cut some slab, do some underground work, that includes more of that work. So that's, that's the difference. I just wanted to talk to that. That number could be whatever we need it to be to fit into the budget per square foot. Um, but at the number up above, to keep the total project about six million, just wouldn't include that extensive of work.
I kinda got lost there, Adam might have checked out maybe or something. Sorry.
So below the blue line is essentially an extra.
Yeah, or an addition, okay.
To, to do more extensive renovation of the locker room.
We might get into discussion and I don't think we have a picture of that, but, and you guys are real familiar with that space down the one hallway from the girls.
Yeah, that whole section in between the new and the old gym is probably a third of it is wasted.
Yeah, that's what brought up this discussion and we get, we'll discuss it later about what could we do with that space.
No, it's, there's a lot of wasted space.
I think so.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually part of, part of that strategy is if the roofing project, we're gonna know more soon. And if that can go out to bid, um, sooner, it's a totally separate beast, you might as well get on that one, get materials ordered. If that can happen sooner, we'll have a hard number. And if we can save a little there, that then puts more back into locker rooms or whatever, whatever the next priority is. So that could be to our advantage too, to get that out ahead of time.
I'm talking about that and since you said something about as soon as possible, whatever, you know, the supply chain and things like that. We do know that when we did Norfield, um, gym, um, you know, we closed, we closed the gym right after graduation. Uh, and we still went in, uh, a little bit into the school year. And so, um, do you have any estimates or what we have to do to be able to try to do the same thing this year? With a similar, with a si- similar situation of doing it right after school's out?
Yeah, supply chain, depending on, uh, the building trade, I guess, or the material is still all over the board. Things are getting better. Roofing is getting much better than it was a year ago. Um, I don't know for maple gym floors exactly yet, uh, if there's any lead time on that. I would still definitely expect it to impact the school year to some extent. Um, it's a glued down system. There's asbestos, so the abatement takes longer. You have to move bleachers due floor, but it's just a lot longer process than if it was just a clean, wide open space. And it's a good floor, it's a lot of area. Um, so yeah, as we get into it and once we start to identify, you know, subcontractors, we can definitely get a better schedule. But if, I can't sit here and say it'll definitely be done in the summer. There's nowhere else, I'd be able to say that tonight.
But if we started those conversations though, and the board would agree to, for us to move forward with this, um, there could be a possibility, just throwing this out here too. You know, even if we started before school was out, um, and moved graduation, that would be probably the biggest thing to try to get that taken care of, but just throwing that out as an idea.
Yeah, definitely on some of these, you know, sooner the better, get materials ordered. If there is, you know, an, an extra four week delay, if you can start early, we have that time kind of built into the spring. Um, so that would be to your advantage. And then, yeah, I think the decision is planning on some disruption of school. If you kind of prefer that before summer or going into the fall after summer, I know it's difficult for the gym, but, um, I, I would expect there to be some disruption there.
There was some discussion, one of those meetings or whatever, about possibly on the gym running ahead of the whole legal bonding issue, uh, piece of it. So we could cover for that within our own means, so to speak, just to accelerate the whole project.
As part of the bonding issue, there is an allowance that you can pay yourself back for a project that you have already planned for as part of that bond. If you needed to do that to get it started earlier.
Yeah, I would think that, cause I'm thinking about spring sports. There's no spring sport that requires that gym space. So I would say that if you could get somebody in there April, May, cause volleyball, basketball, orphan gyms start, you know, so they have to have that space. And obviously we're already limited for space. So you try to force all those teams into one gym, you, that's, yeah, I know, I remember when we did it in Norfield and it was just like.
If, if we go that route, I would like to know pretty quickly too, just because if we would get to that point, you know, what would we do about graduation? Now, there's ideas out there of course, and we've had ideas several, several years ago.
Right, Norfield.
Yeah. We, we talked about going to Honeywell and also the Ford Theater and things like that, but we'd have to hear on the books, so.
If they wanted a new floor.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I don't like it. We've already got the setup, we've already got the stuff up there, just you want to add to the other.
How many, why we're only saying, how many contractors do you think would bid on something like that? Are there just a very few?
Depends on the floor that we spec. If you allow multiple manufacturers of the maple systems, you can easily get three to four bids. Um, you know, if you get specific and, and hone in on one, certain installers only install certain manufacturers' floors. But there is easily three very solid manufacturers that we would absolutely recommend. So if you don't, you know, if you allow three or four, I would definitely expect three or four bidders for sure.
Do you think there's gonna be anything done substrate?
We, we ran into that in Nor- Norfield. It was.
You don't level it, right?
We had, we had to level that floor. And it took probably another week or so, week or two to do that.
How did you level it?
They came in with grinders.
Okay.
Grind it down. And they took a level across it, so it was, it's pretty level when they got done.
Is this figured, is that figured in on this kind of estimate?
Yeah, actually having this previous knowledge is great for this thing, you know. Hopefully there's fewer surprises, but with the asbestos, with the leveling, you know, things are gonna be done. So yeah, I did bump a normal gym floor replacement number for that reason.
Yeah.
Um, the, the two buildings, I mean, they're, they're twins, they're built together. There are some differences, you know, over the years, working through them, you know, certain walls go to deck, some don't. So not to say that it'll be any better with that gym floor, but hopefully there's nothing worse, you know, so hopefully.
How do you put that out for bid then? I'm curious, you, you just list that as a separate item that's contingent on whatever's, that'd be timing materials in to fix the.
Like the leveling?
Yeah.
There's a couple of ways you could do it. You could roll the dice and then whatever happens comes out of the contingency. I think knowing that you have that at North, I'd probably recommend setting an allowance aside. You know, we figure some area times a unit cost and say it's, let's just say it's twenty grand worth or twenty-five grand with the leveling. But the contractor then has a unit price. So if he gets into it and it's, and it's not very bad, maybe only spend five grand of it, but it's at a certain cost per square foot or per, you know, half inch of leveling. That way you're not at his mercy during construction, you know, oh, it's five hundred bucks a square foot to level it. No, it's not, you know. So we'd set that up ahead of time, so you're kind of locked in and protected on bid day. And then if you don't spend it, you don't spend it, you get back.
My concern was more that he was protecting himself in the initial bid, not knowing, you know.
Yeah, so that's why we would set up an allowance with a unit price. So he tells us the unit price on bid day, that locks it in. Um, not to say that he's still not padding because he doesn't know, but if we say, um, you know, three thousand square feet of floor leveling up to half an inch, you know, give him something to go on and then hope for the cost of that. And that helps to protect him and you, but it locks in that number for you. And if you don't spend it, you don't spend it. That's just one strategy to help try to control that on bid day.
Have we ever had moisture issues shown?
Um, not on that floor, I mean, the other floor they did.
Yeah, they were like.
So what causes that uneven, or is when the building, it wasn't leveled, when the building?
Yeah, when it was built, just a concrete floor, right? Yeah.
So it's probably gonna be comparable to Southwood more on that one?
Um, I would expect some, but it, it's hard to say. I mean, it's hard to say, there are two different contractors that build.
There were two different, okay.
Yeah, cause now we do notice differences between the two buildings, um, just as we're working through them and finding issues with all the other renovations we've done. You just notice things that are just not done the same way in each building. It might look the same, but it just wasn't built the same way.
Okay.
So that's part of it, but I would expect some.
Yeah.
Um, anything else on the gym floor? Okay, touched on the EFS, um, then the locker rooms. Hopefully I explained that well enough between what's up above within that six million number and down below that would bring the total up to about seven and a half, seven point seven.
Does the EFS, uh, include like paint, like is it like?
Yeah, so the number that I have includes actually it's a resurfacing, it's not just paint, but EFS has, I think it, it's not quite plaster, but think of plaster. So there's, it's a built-in finish coat. It's more than just paint.
So you can tint it though to.
Yes, absolutely, different textures, you know, you, you've seen it, like some of it's kind of sandy, some of it has like a swirl texture. It could be more or less aggressive, but yeah, the, the pigment is integral in the finish. You can just paint it, but that's kind of a step down, um, from an actual finish, EFS finish. Um, and then tennis court replacement, so that's six courts, no lights, but the fencing and everything else, total replacement, uh, for six, six courts.
And that's got to the point where the cracks are, you can't fill them in anymore, they're too far cracked.
I walked both of those courts Saturday, I know it was morning, but. So is there any kind of drainage down through, like it looked like there were cut channels between the courts, lengthways, like? The top surface has cuts like this, far apart, is that put in there? In other words, it's not a solid surface going across. You see the underlying asphalt?
I don't, I don't know if they did that for expansion or if they had for drainage. It's.
Four inches of drainage going out to the.
The courts are level, right? There's no.
Slow.
They, they have to be completely flat for playing.
Basically level, yeah. Uh, um, I, I don't know honestly.
I just, I didn't know if that was something that they cut out cracks or something, but it's like this way.
Hmm, I mean, a new design that we would do would include some control joints to help control the cracking. All asphalt courts are gonna crack, they're gonna crack, no way around it. Um, but we try to cut in and, and put those between the courts, not in the middle of the courts, so that over time, you know, you, you're gonna get a crack, but you can still play it for a long time. But when those are built, I doubt that was done, not to say something didn't come in after the fact and try to patch it or repair it. I know Leslie's has done a lot of work on the courts over the years, so.
Wow.
That's not really any bells for me, what, the way you're describing it. Happy to take a look, but this number is on a new site, new courts. Uh, both schools have room, so you wouldn't have, you know, you can build courts while the other ones sit there. So that's what this assumes includes, brand new site, brand new courts.
So it would be included all the base material?
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Cause that was one thing that caught my attention, just my conviction was that it wouldn't hurt to have those slightly elevated from what they are right now.
Southwood's not bad, but I think Norfield sets kind of, yeah, Southwood at least sets up a little bit.
Little bit, but you got the parking lot right up against it to the one direction, and, and if you worry about kids backing into the fence and, you know. And then the lane going to the sewer plant to the east, at, at the one, at the south end, I think it's higher and brings water in it. But, no, I.
So you would not use the same site, or you're just saying you would tear that completely out?
This number assumes we're building brand new courts on virgin land, a lawn.
So it doesn't count the tear out?
Yeah, yeah, that we can, yeah, definitely restore it back to lawn. It's just not building it in the same spot was my point. Cause then you don't have courts until they're done.
It'd be economically advant- an advantage though to tear these out and then we redo base on top of what currently has been used and built up.
Cause if you did it in the fall, we don't have boys tennis, so you could do it after spring. How about fall, winter, whatever to do it?
Yeah, yeah, right, if you, if you time it right, yeah, you can do that where you, you have, uh, you can build it in the same spot. I, I can't guarantee you we can save much money and use the existing base cause the, the, the section of asphalt and subbase and everything that we would do now, I'm guessing is not what you have. So we'd have to test it, see if we can use it, add to it. So, but there's potential, you could maybe save a little.
Well, yeah, I'm not saving any of the asphalt or anything like that.
Right, just the base.
Yeah, yes. Not knowing what they did, I mean, you know, yeah, add it to it and test the convection.
Yeah, and we can core tennis courts to see the makeup of exactly what's there, just like you do driveways and everything else, we can have that done.
Do they run drainage under tennis courts then?
Not normally.
Dry.
Unless we know there's a serious problem or, you know, if it's that way, you probably don't wanna build in there anyways. So, but, but yeah, we can have them cored to see if that's reasonable. And there are, we've had some interesting projects where there's been overlay systems done. Um, but for the, for the sake of kind of what we're talking about and good, long-term courts, if we're considering brand new courts. Okay. So that's Southwood and then Northfield is the same scope minus the gym floor. Um, so it's listed there separately without that number included, but the EFS, the locker rooms and the, and the tennis courts. And then at Metro North, um, that's a chiller replacement with a capacity to add cooling for the gym and cafe in the future. So it's, like, it'd be bigger than what's there just for that reason, so that you can condition the, the current gym and cafe.
What's your idea, Adam, on the time it would take to get that unit involved?
As we were chatting, uh, before the meeting, Steve and I, about lead times on certain things. I told him that's one, the chiller, I don't have off the top of my head today. Um, some mechanical and electrical equipment is longer than others right now. Um, but I, I, I must have to get back to you on the, on the chiller lead times.
There's a longer small brain one of the Stevens. No, you don't have to say.
So that, that total then below or above that blue line is about that six million for everything for those projects. And then like I said, the, the additional scope of locker renovations, just to, I guess, blow it up a little more, gut it a little more extensively is listed down below. I think that's what, one thing that can shift in this, like I mentioned, getting the roof out ahead will be good. Have a really hard number on that, that way we're not guessing, that helps with the rest of the, of the projects. Just like anything we do for you, we're always gonna recommend some alternates along the way to help protect the budget or wish list items, you know, if things coming well, you can pick out one more thing or two more things, so. So that's where that part's at. Can I answer anymore on any of those?
Well, I guess, yeah. Do you have ideas what you would do if you blew up that section? We, I mean, have you looked at the space and Steve, I mean?
I'm very familiar, yeah, with, with the, the buildings and the spaces. I mean, I think we need to talk with the athletic department, get in early, program what's needed. Like I mentioned, I know maybe showers aren't quite as needed, maybe that gets reduced. There's talk about a team or a film room, you know, so just like the program, this is what we really need. We don't need that many lockers, we don't need that many showers, but we do need this, we need that. Just kind of get in and see what makes sense. And depending on that kind of cost per square foot, how extensive it can be, that's where we figure out, here's, you know, spend your money here, that's smart. You know, and don't blow that up as much because this is more important, those sorts of things.
Storage was another area too, that was broadened when we covered up it with our principles and ideas a little bit. The storage as well, which, you know, maybe a locker or a, um, shower area is not necessarily needed as much and reduce it down to maybe a single shower or something and has some storage.
Where you think about that whole area, pretty much it's usually, uh, I guess you're trying, I guess, the only thing is if you divided all, or say that you turned three of those locker rooms into two or something like that, well then, well, how, I don't, I'm not athletic director, but do they use all, like, all three of those, like when they have wrestling tournaments or things like that, you know, do they still need that same amount? You know, that's why, those are the kind of things that.
Yeah, I don't think they can reduce, I don't think they will be able to reduce any locker rooms that they currently use. But there are some locker rooms that I think we can utilize a little bit better even. Um, like even just giving simple, maybe better access to it. Like we talked about, maybe a door on that back wall that leads you to that bathroom, leads you to that locker room instead of, you know, having to cut through the girls locker room to get up there. Uh, you know, officials, they don't necessarily feel like they have a good space to, to house their officials when they come, uh, that type of stuff, so.
Miss Good points go, I mean, how much locker room space do we need?
Well, I just.
Do we have any free space afterward?
Uh, that's, you, you know, I, I look at the one PE locker room and, you know, when we went into, you know, when we went school, they had lockers on those two, two main pillars, well, that's all wasted space. So, and then that shower, that's a big shower, that's never used. So, you know, I'm just looking at how, you know, how we can utilize that, if you take, take some walls out. You know, even in that other PE, I, we, I think when we were there, PE girls locker room, which is that one in the back of the hallway, they've got the same locker. There's no way they use all that ever. So, you know, that could be condensed quite a bit. Cause you know, visiting locker, or, or teams, they got the lockers, you got a place to sit, you got chalkboard. You don't need all that space, right?
How much of those walls are structured, do you suppose?
Um, I mean, most of the interior walls, the small ones are not. The ones that run north and south on each side of the gyms are. Um, but even so, if we're poking holes in a structural wall and add a lintel, I mean, as long as we're not making Swiss cheese out of it, we can do some of that, so it's not a good deal.
Well, of course, my mind always goes to a blank sheet of paper. It's like, okay, all of that area outside of the difficulty of replumbing it, how would you design it today?
Yeah, yeah, we need to go through that, that programming process to, yeah, the right pieces and parts, exactly what we're talking about here, go through that and then pin that down. But the numbers that are included in this just help define how far we can go with some of that scope. So if it's the, if it's the upper number in the black lines and not below the blue, then I kind of know like nah, we really can't take down, you know, twenty-five percent of your walls, it's gotta be a little more modest. If it, if it goes up to, you know, the other number, then yeah, we can, all right, we can do a little work. We can't totally blow it up, but we can still make some significant changes. So this depends on, on that number.
I mean, there, there's no way it happened this summer.
No.
If you're gonna redo it, so you wonder how that fits in the school schedule?
Yeah, it'll have to be phased. I mean, summer projects really don't exist anymore unless they're very, very small. Um, we, all we do is schools and almost everything we do is phased through the year. Um, so yeah, we just make smart, you know, decisions on who can go when, this can't happen until that's done. Or, or yeah, we can, we can move these kids to another space for three months so you can get that done. You know, just work with you and staff and try to be smart about it. And obviously impacts facilities and when you, you know, shut certain utilities down and do certain work. So it's just part of the, the puzzle of building schools and renovating schools.
There had been some discussion about the ceilings in the cafeterias and there not one here, but you're right.
But you're probably not doing that, right?
We can, it's just not like some tile. Easy, yeah, easy.
That or it gets locked into another project.
We still had that in the priority later on, didn't we?
And that's an easy example of an alternate, that's a, you know, really easy example of an alternate to, to include. See if you can get a good number on bid day and take it or not.
You didn't have a light in place and then you got a speed, who does?
The high schools are pretty much done, you know.
Yeah, I thought one of those sheets I saw was twelve dollars a foot, square foot for the ceiling.
Oh, for the ceiling, I liked a lot of lighting.
No, that was excluding lighting, so.
Oh, yeah.
And that, that number would include the grid as well, not just the tile. But that's an option too, if the grid's in good shape. And when we did the last round, we did all the grid as well, we did those ceilings. But that is an option too, so.
It would match the hallways then?
Correct, yeah, yep.
Other questions for Adam?
Oh, yeah.
I feel like I'm talking too much, but how, how does a locker room renovation fit in there then? A person wait, we wait to see about how all these other go, to see what kind of money there is? Or are we just telling you now, or we decide in the short future here? We're doing locker rooms, Adam, start showing us drawings or show us.
Yeah, the biggest decision, I mean, I think a lot of this can be done in tandem. We can get the roof rolling if that's a priority, start to get that out to bid at the same time, start to think about designing the locker rooms and do the other work. But the biggest thing is it, is it a six million dollar total? Is it the seven point seven? Or is it something else? That, and, and if there's no additional scope, if it's this same scope and that tells me, okay, now you're gonna, gonna spend more on the locker rooms most likely. And then in the meantime, you know, here in a couple of months, get the roof bids back in, then we can lock that in. Oh, we just found another two hundred thousand, that's great news, you know, then we can start to, you know, see where that goes. So I think that, I think it can be done in tandem. Uh, but yeah, the bigger number, or the bigger question is just what's that, what's that top dollar, you know, what's the cap? And then that directly relates back to the scope. And then that directly relates back to the scope, so the lockers.
The dollars are involved, no matter what what a person does live, but you want to do it right, so.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do. And it, I mean, from our conversations, it does sound like maybe a little more significant changes are needed, at least in part of those locker room areas, not just finishes and simple stuff. So, uh, so, yeah, but if it's if it's six, it needs to be six, then.
So does this include like new lockers?
Yes. None are yet, none are recent there, I believe the other, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So my question would be. Because we're looking at the budget. Do we need to, is that replacing, like if you went in there and you said, okay, I'm going to replace every locker that's in there, that's already in it, even though we use a third of them? Can we cut that out?
Absolutely.
I mean, there's no sense of having more lockers for the kids to destroy, basically. I mean, because my kids all go to all our school and state, I mean, even sports kids. I mean, I think the only ones that I remember is when the when they're varsity, they might, they'll leave their stuff there and they'll leave it in the locker. For football, they have to, I mean, they have to use all that, those, but that's even different locker rooms, so. But for P E, they don't. They don't use any of those lockers.
Are the varsity locker rooms used only for varsity sports? They don't have P E traffic coming in?
No. So just in varsity, there's a separate P E locker room? Now, I don't know about girls.
Well, the girls basketball, see the work, but but the girls volleyball was used uses the P E, so they could flip flop that. They could think, we could, we could make one that the girls varsity volleyball and basketball use this locker.
And both high schools use the lockers differently.
Yes.
So.
But I I'm just saying, you know, even the girls locker room, the girls basketball locker room, there's probably 60 lockers in there.
Yeah.
We got eight girls. You know, volleyball, they have 20, so why do we have 60 lockers when we, you know, we don't even have close to that? So that's what I'm saying is that's trying to maximize those spaces, make it, but don't spend all the money on these lockers that we're never going to use.
Right.
I mean, again, reality is reality, they don't use them, so, but use it for, you know, obviously we already know the showers. I mean, my first thing on that P E locker room is. You know, take off, take out that shower and connect it to that storage room right beside it. And there's, I mean, more square feet of storage, you know, of this.
Does these locker rooms include like the coach, the coaches offices?
Yes, yep, 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 the whole area.
And really the weeds too, the outside doors too, does that include doors? Is that?
To the gym, right?
Well, no, that that's might be something else, but the, well, yeah, I think that was that was part of it too, but no, just the locker room doors.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, absolutely, yeah.
Does this include a sauna for the coaches room?
Just turn the shower off.
He's not thinking of showering. One of my thoughts to tag on Scott's thinking a little bit, I mean, this is separate, is to upscale those varsity locker rooms alone that. So not that we're have high furnishings in them, but they haven't, they're upgraded. So that if you're varsity or you're related to a varsity sport, you know, I don't know. If somebody stole your stuff, they can get the Milwaukee down on them. So you have to have all locker doors and all that, or you have it like professional sports where they're open and you have an assigned space. I'm just thinking about the generation has higher expectations and if we could upgrade.
Yeah.
They don't lock it anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, I mean. Yeah, that that idea is, heck, you want it to build, just have cabinets.
Right.
I'm just saying, I just, I'm just, you know, looking at all that can you do into those locker rooms and. All the kids do when they're pissed off at halftime is boom, there's a door destroyed. You know, or they kick it, you know, so I just, less things they can tear up, the better and make it look nice.
I kind of like the the concept of the team room too. Well, not to bore you with a story, but I'm sitting down there at the Y the other day watching my dance and play first time around basketball. And when he's sitting on the sidelines, he's shacking away with the kid, you know, he didn't care about the game. I told my daughter that that is what sports is all about really, is the.
Social.
Yeah. Some way we could encourage that with our facilities, that's all.
Absolutely.
Clean sheet of paper. Unfortunately, probably have to increase the bottom of the blue line here.
If you want a totally clean sheet, yeah, that number bumps up too. I mean, that's a good, that's a good renovation, that's a serious renovation, but it's still not brand new, it's still not totally blowing it up. Yeah, things are expensive, unfortunately, so.
Well, I I'd do anything to help encourage participation in athletics. I think it's one of the best classrooms in the whole building.
I guess like, you know, we're talking about storage and stuff like that, you know, just continue thinking, but I mean, obviously we're we're not able to use those facilities out there and, you know, for ag and all that, you know, is there any way, any space out there that we can help the principals out with storage? I mean, you would have to build some, I'm just saying, but I I, a lot of wasted space out there. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so if we got it, we're eating it and everything, I mean, is there ways to create a little bit of whatever they need? Heck, we got two what, two stories, and some of those areas, you could just.
What are they short on storage for?
What do they need?
Just stuff.
Just stuff. I mean, equipment is, I mean, there's equipment for all kinds of different things, for all your different sports. And so when we purchase new equipment or different type.
Oh, so you're saying that the athletics need storage?
Well.
I was thinking.
The A Ds, I mean, the discussion was more around the the athletic facilities when we were talking about the locker rooms. Because that would be the most common area probably to store stuff.
Yeah.
That was kind of like a building, buildings is more commands value and certain spaces command more value, have more value than just storage.
Right.
You know, so. Where's the location at, that type of thing? So if it's in a prime utilized spot, then to me, it doesn't deserve to be used for storage.
Sure, I don't disagree. And some of it, maybe they just need to clean some of their stuff out as well.
They need help with that. I like Tom, thanks a lot.
Use for user side.
Which these types of projects are always good for cleaning stuff out too. Obviously, this is a small piece of the bigger puzzle when we talk about the district. And so our hope was that we would be able to get something started for 2023. And then have further discussions about some of our other facilities and what what those will look like down the road. And so whatever we end up deciding to borrow, that whether it's 6 million up to 7.8 or whatever number that ends up being, that will kind of set us up into how we build our debt out into the future. So we got to keep that in the back of our minds as well, as this will kind of allow us to start setting a a debt rate to some degree that we would continue to work off of as we look at other pieces of the puzzle.
Would you try to work in the the floors out with this year, like the roof?
We try to get all these, I mean, we try to get as much as we could started in 2020, 30, because that's when we're going to, that's when we would borrow the money. And so we'd want to get that started as soon as we could. And like some of these things, we might be able to try to get a jump start on, like maybe the gym.
New roof. Absolutely.
To try to get a jump start on some of that stuff as well, because part of the bond issue is does allow us to pay ourselves back if we wanted to kind of pay in advance to get those part, get those projects starting and moving before we had our bond money, if that was the case. But we could probably get our bond money pretty quick if we jumped on it pretty quick as well too, so.
Steve, the roof itself at elementary would be number one of everything.
Yeah, right now.
Sooner those bids, then how do you think the more they come back in our favor?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, roof pricing has gone up like everything else, you know, the last year and a half or two. But materials, things are slowing down a little, you can get materials a little better now. It used to be last year was just crazy, you can actually get roofing now, that's a good thing. And the roofers that you've had are interested in this, I guess, if McGuff's already willing to help, you know, go do some rough course and table what. Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, sooner the better for the roof, I mean, it needs to be done, that's a. Top down, keep it dry and then start working on the building, but if it's, yeah, it's wet.
So really, I think our next steps would be, you know, our board meeting is next next Tuesday. So like to bring a recommendation to you to go ahead and improve the beginning phases, because obviously this is just a work session, but just a week from tonight, we can make a recommendation.
To move forward. Question for me, kind of this. Like if you're building something, you don't get estimates, you know, and see what they are, and then you borrow money. In this sense, we would be borrowing, how would we know what we want the bond issue for? Not knowing the locker room, to extend the locker room and all that, we just get a chunk of money.
That's kind of what you, Adam was referring to, is you decide on what chunk of money you're willing to borrow. And then you got to, you're going to have to build off of that that chunk. Now, we also have, I don't want to call them reserve funds, but we also have operational funds that we can offset a little bit to some of that, right? That's what those operational fund dollars are. Now, those operational fund dollars alone can't support these types of projects or most projects, but we can offset any issues we might run into if we need to go a little bit higher on something or whatever the case might be.
Because locker locker rooms are an unknown thing, which are large dollars, so. I believe in everybody here at the table and you guys would, that you have discipline. But if you go get bond issued for X amount of millions and then it has to be used on certain projects, that just cart before the horse kind of thing, I guess.
And part of it too is that since we're going to have various priorities and steps in the future, if we did not bond enough, then we could continue to do something else to to make that work.
You can't use the overage here on something else.
Yes, you can.
Okay, yeah. So you don't have to define it.
If you wanted to borrow $10 million, you could have overage, if you ended up having overage and you could use it on something else.
So you just don't, where's that money sit then? Is it actually borrowed because the bonds are issued?
So it depends on the type of bond you get. So a lot of times that money's, if we do a lease bond, typically sits in with the with the bank.
U S bank.
And it's been U S bank for us. So it sits in the bank and then we write out the requisitions for payments when we receive those. And the bank pays them, we don't pay them, the bank pays them. So the bank is holding the money.
Okay, but then say there's two extra million dollars, then is there a time by which that has to be spent on something?
Sooner the better, you can't just have it sitting there. So, yeah, you need to spend it at some point, but.
Because we had a little bit of these discussions with the possibility of new high schools about approaching it a little bit more like the private sector would, you know, accumulate funds.
Right. Now, we've had some bonds, mainly G O bonds, that we received the dollars and they sit in our account and we pay them from there. But with these types of projects, I would assume the lease bond is probably going to be the better route to go. And like I said, that would sit with the bank and we would, we would spend.
So on the lease bond, then we'd have to have that all formally drawn out by lawyers.
Bond council, yeah.
And the whole thing and find people that want to participate.
Yeah.
So if we're, I mean, we don't have legal expense for our dollars and we're not careful either, thinking of the other side. Like, you're better off to have a $10 million program than you are a three or four million dollar one.
And sometimes some of those contingency costs kind of reflect some of that stuff, like payments to the architecture, payments to bond council, those types of things.
Financial institution.
Yeah.
Yeah, the soft costs, not the hard construction costs, so that's figured into this. But your main question about how how do you arrive at that bond amount is based on estimates. So if you're concerned that the locker rooms need to be blown up and have appropriate dollars per square foot to totally, you know, erase the page and redo it, then we can give you that estimate instead of 7.8, you know, it would be something more than that. So, but it's based on, yeah, the scope and and the dollars that you want to spend, so what? Kind of like we talked about the, you know, quality, cost and quantity, you pick two, I get the third one. I mean, that's, that's how we get there. So if it's, if it's eight max, we're going to max out the best way to spend dollars in locker rooms, we can do that. Or if it's no, we need to really blow them up, we need to go above the eight, okay, but then we just need to find that scope.
I just don't want us to borrow much money and then say, okay, we've got to spend this all on a list of things here that we've already discussed.
We'd have flexibility if it came back that we had extra, I guess, I'm going to say.
So you could use that on other projects?
Yes.
I believe there is a time limit, I swear I can help, but I I believe there is.
I know it's sooner the better, but I don't, I don't know that it's wholehearted. You can't hold it, I mean, you wouldn't want to sit on it for four or five years, I mean.
Right, but 12 months wouldn't be an issue.
No.
Good.
Especially if we got other projects one month.
Right.
Right.
No.
The bidding on the locker rooms would go out to general contractor and then these subs, or how would that all be put out to bid?
That's how we've traditionally done it for you, design, bid and then build, that's kind of the traditional way to do a job. Doesn't have to be, but that's how I would expect this to go unless there's a reason to entertain anything else. I mean, for something like that, like a locker renovation, it does make sense to, we need to do it that way. But there's still up there, there are methods and ways to do it.
Yeah, we've talked about those in the past, you know, for larger projects, we might use a C and C or somebody like that to help manage that.
These aren't that large.
One of the things that had been under consideration was painting of the main gyms. So, I mean, that's certainly not on the list here.
Correct.
So does having the floor up, doesn't really matter, they cover that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that timing doesn't matter, I mean.
I was trying to think, when we had those gyms painted, at least they were.
Wasn't that long ago, when it's handled, was it?
And that's a great alternate, that's a really easy alternate to put in, if you know, if you still like to get a number on on bid day to paint things or or, you know, the hard parts of that, the structure, the duct, all that, get that done, walls are easy. But, yeah, if you wanted to get a number, that's a great alternate.
Southwood's looks good.
I think the gym's a good, I don't think that would work, that wouldn't be where I'd want it, but.
Very bright.
Yeah, everybody actually, because Northville, maybe Southwood will get that one, because everybody's like, well, it's too bright. Because of the color, the light floor and everything like this.
Only the lights, really.
Yeah, and that's just a, I mean, they're just, I mean, yeah, you might want to change the mural or something like that, but I mean, the rest of it is, that's the gym, yeah.
Some things, and I'll go into the whole list of things that I could see, the other I could see done is that Southwood, it seems like the entrance off of 124 is so dark, you know? If there were some lighting there at the entrance on the drive and then drive since so narrow, you know, I know I'm getting old.
No, it isn't.
The road's narrow and dark, right?
It's almost, we don't have any lighting out by the entrance. I actually don't people walk along the curves because they can't see.
Is that Kevin?
I don't know if it was him.
It's a red truck.
But I, yeah, they're.
It would be harder to do, but if you can. It would be hard to do, but if you can make, I know we talk about the aesthetics of our schools to look nice, you know, the entry lights and the fog.
We're wanting to get one of those big, uh, TV screen things, the.
Oh, the bright things.
The bright signs.
That'd light up the whole front end.
Well, the EFS too, that will make a big difference too.
Well, I was gonna ask about that, is, I mean, would we stick with the same dynamic or colors or would you change it up a little bit?
We could change it up.
Cause you have a great chance to really change.
It is a good chance to change it up, at, at least at minimum, you know, we added, we added those new entrance ways. It'd be at least at minimum to match that, but you could, like I said, you can do whatever at that point in time.
Good ideas from, yeah, but I just, I think if, if you're doing that, it might be a change of paper. Looks, the other time you paint a room, it looks like you redid, remodeled something, you know, you changed those corners or those areas, looks like you didn't do much.
Yeah, Adam's really good at that though too, with some of the schools we saw with the, some of the carpet and walls and different things like that. You've shown us in elementaries and different things like that, so I'm sure he has a good handle on that part of it. All right, anything else for Adam? We can stay and talk more if you want, but. Cause you know, actually with our priorities that we want to continue to look at, you know, we probably will invite Adam several times and so.
He probably wants you to too.
It's so fast to drive.
Yeah. He doesn't need to have a helicopter or something like that.
Well, this says, this is a close drive for me, so it's fine, I can, I don't mind, I like to go a lot further, but this is, no, happy to help, thank you for having me.
I think you can sense from us that, you know, if we, if we do it, we need to whip the pedal down.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
I guess, I guess the only thing I would maybe is ask Adam if he would give us a number on what maybe a total blow up would look like and then we can find a range in there.
Right.
What we feel like is comfortable to borrow.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it's all right, we'd like to give that recommendation to you guys though to get going on this next Tuesday so we can officially get started. So if you would have time to maybe throw that to us.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, let's just plug this, plug this spreadsheet and see what feels comfortable, you know, where your range is and where your top end is and then, you know, fit the scope to that. The locker rooms have, it's good space, I mean, there's, I think, if, if you can't quite go to the full blow up and start over, I don't think that's a problem. I think you have really good stuff to work with there. Now, some of the old, yeah, shower, little small areas, yeah, you probably want to open some of that up and change that, but I don't think we have to totally wipe it out and start over to make it very functional, a huge impact on the school.
On the showers, do they, I mean, I wasn't showers, because obviously they're just one big open room. Do they do just like, like individual showers, like two or three of them and then just say that's good, you know?
Yeah, but the group showers are definitely going away. We have very few schools that want to still have that. But think of like a YMCA where almost have, you know, individual stalls or like a drying stall with the shower behind it type thing. So that's, that's becoming pretty common. There's normally a family type restroom and shower in, in the mix too, you could use for any, anyone in any need. So yeah, the individuals are definitely, definitely more popular.
And with the toilet area, because we were talking about that when we were there, like doors on the toilet area and stuff, they don't have. Scott was talking about it, I mean, that's.
Well, the other idea I've seen would be great too, so, you know, hand dryers you have, but they don't have full, full body dryers too. I think, you know, while we're doing a clean sheet, I.
Yeah, we're not getting them on the locker room.
Maybe they take a shower then, so.
You're talking about a small.
All right. All right, the release Adam now?
I'll revise this for that other number and then, yeah, any other questions along the way? Happy to help.
If you can make some more quarry into the gym floor tying thing.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, okay. Yeah, at least in the other lead time for sure, if there's a delay, I'm getting material.
Spring if you get it.
Well, it was interesting, I, I told someone here that, several people maybe, also that, you know, South Adams had their gym floor, that happened on Christmas. Last Friday, I was in this superintendent meeting with that superintendent, they already had that laid last Friday. Wasn't painted yet. And obviously ours is a lot different because we have all the renovation or, you know, the tear up and yours was already kind of torn up, but, and they just had to lay it back down, but. But they did get the material in very timely fashion, obviously.
Yeah, throughout all of, all of this last, you know, eighteen months, two years, I haven't heard anything that like the maple is a problem. Lumber in general, when it all began, wasn't a bit of an issue, that's slowed down quite a bit, but I haven't heard of gym floors being a specific problem. Like I said, if you're open to a range of manufacturers, or there might even be two or three or four systems that are all very, very similar, that might give you more options to get something quicker or a faster installation, you know, there's all those things that go along with it as well. But yeah, I'm happy to ask, there's some installers that I know that'll help us out, give us an opinion, at least give us an idea at any time, so.
I like the lightness in Northville, or, you know, Southwood, of course, has aged with coats on, stripped, probably several times. It's like, and I like the lighting.
All right, very good, thank you. Appreciate it, thanks, have a good night.
Thanks, Steve. You guys have anything else?
I think I'm gonna head to the counter for.
I told you, an hour or less, I thought.
You just made it.
So are we done here?
Kevin.
You want to say we're done, President?
Any other discussion, we're, as we heard.
Okay.